All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to our June 3, 2021, regular board business meeting. When it call us to order. Roll call, we are missing Director Stowers. All remaining directors are in attendance. From the audience, so time's been set aside on the agenda for citizens' requests of the board. If you're a member of the community and wish to provide public comment, then a reminder that you will want to email your comments to Sarah Avery at Avery four A V E R Y four at gresham dot K twelve dot or dot U S. And do that by five P M. The day of the meeting. And your comments will be part of the public record, and that's what's happened. Just, I want to say this upfront, and I'll revisit it when we get there. So we received thirty five. Comments from our community, some of those topics were overlapping. Largely over the policy that we considered last week. So we have all thirty five. Comments, part of the public record, unfortunately, because of the volume. And and time considerations, we're not going to have anybody promoted to actually read their comments, but we have reviewed them, we've read them, and they are available for public review as well, and I will walk through exactly how you can access those from home, so you can read them as well. Okay, with that, we have a meeting agenda.
I've moved to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
All right, it's been moved by Director Howitt, second by Director O'Connell to approve the meeting agenda. All those in favor? Hi. All right. Just reminder that if you're not. You're not speaking, you might mute your microphone at home. We have some feedback. Okay, our first up is a consent agenda. Consent agenda items listed are matters considered by the board to be routine, and they'll be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or persons in the audience request specific guidance be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. So in our consent agenda, we have four items. Item one, minutes from the regular business meeting. May sixth, minutes from the regular B two is minutes from the regular work session, May twenty seventh. B three is financial report as of April thirtieth. And before his personnel report employee contracts.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved by Director Howitt, second by Director O'Connell to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Hi, you posed. We move on to recognition. So first up is a San Barlow High School Hospitality and Culinary Arts Competition. And this presenter is Carla Gay. Hi, Carla.
Hello, good evening. Board Chair and members of the board. I actually was not prepared to be up right this quickly, so I will present from my from my computer, but I do want to explain tonight that tonight, the board is asked to recognize five students in the San Barlow High School Culinary Arts C T E pathway for their participation and success in a rigorous hospitality and culinary arts competition. These five students chose to participate in a challenging Skills USA competition to showcase their skills in culinary arts, baking, cake decorating, and restaurant service. They weren't given the recipe or prompt until the day of competition and had to produce, film, and submit their entry within only a couple of hours. They also took an exam in each subject and submitted a resume for grading. Please join us in congratulating the following students on competing, as well as an extra congratulations for our medal winners. And if these students are in the audience, if you're virtually in the audience, please raise your hand, as we would love to see you and be able to recognize you. If you are physically in the audience, please stand up and so that we can acknowledge your presence in the at the meeting. Isabel Zielinski, so Isabel, if I said your name wrong, please correct me. Restaurant Service Gold Medal winner and State Champion and Culinary Arts Bronze Medal winner. Caleb Nix, Restaurant Service Silver Medal winner. Fernando Marino, Restaurant Service Bronze Medal winner. Brittany Dressel competed in three events. And Jada Arthur competed in one event. These students represented San Barlow well against tough competition. Isabel Zelinski's results are particularly impressive as sophomores rarely place at the state level. So to place twice and win an event is a really big deal. As state champion, she also has earned the right to compete at the national level in June. And I want to say a special congratulations to their teacher, Sam Mann. She is the culinary arts teacher at Barlow, and she is a C T E teacher, one of the many and growing cadre of career technical ed teachers that we have in our district, and we're thrilled that she was able to lead this group of students to this event. And so congratulations to these representatives on Bruin pride. Thank you very much.
Couple of you might be in attendance, and so or tell me if you want to big, I think this is incredibly encouraging. Sarah, sorry, could you go back to the pictures? Because I think this just amplifies a lot of what's happening in our community if you go back to the the picture of the kitchen with the students. Sorry. So unfortunately, because of COVID, a lot of our community hasn't been able to see what your dollars produced in our schools. This is a world-class kitchen. Top-of-the-line commercial appliances. And and resources for these students, so you invested your money in a building. And then we have these outstanding educators who design programs that meet the needs of and the very diverse interests of our students. And that's people like Carla Gay and everybody who supports those efforts. But then it comes down to the students demonstrating their excellence and the families that support them. And I just over a year where we've seen so much broken. It's really nice to see community work, and I just wanted to amplify that it that it does work. And those bond dollars are going to create more and more opportunities like this. Right now it's here. And I'm just really quick scanning. But we've got automotive industry, we've got wooden metal shop with truly state-of-the-art equipment that our students are going to are going to get to see, so. Anyway, really, really encouraged. Thank you, Carla, for bringing that forward, and congratulations to the students. Is, yes, sorry that you're in the audience. Thanks for representing your community so well. Well done. Next is a student recognition, state seal of by literacy, as always, exciting one. Karina Rusesi. Are you?
I'm actually borrowing Mr. Hugh's seat right now. I look really short here at the moment. I should have adjusted the chair. Thank you, for chair and board members. I'm so excited to share with you the names of students who achieved the state seal of by literacy, and I think that's particularly close to my heart as someone who's a bilingual speaker and a native Spanish speaker. Has sido un placer ser bilingüe y me ha dado muchas oportunidades. I I've been able to open so many doors because of my bilingualism, so I really celebrate our students and their bilingualism. I want to tell you a little bit about how these students were able to be recognized for this, and then, of course, I'd like you to, I'd like to read their names, and you see some beautiful photos up as well. Students demonstrate their bilingualism in many different ways, but in our district, we use an assessment called the stamp. And you might think, oh, well, you know, speaking another language, but it's quite rigorous, and it demands that students demonstrate a high level of proficiency in reading, writing, listening, and speaking, and they don't take an average score. You had to hit that high level of proficiency in each and every one of those four domains. It's not an easy task, and sometimes even native speakers who haven't had a chance to receive instruction in literacy aren't able to meet it. So I'm really proud to share these my names with you. Eight of them, actually, yeah, eight of them are Spanish speakers, and one is Japanese and English, which is really neat. You don't hear that every day. And it's pretty evenly split for Gresham High and five at San Barlow. So right now I'm going to read all of them out loud to you. Wendy Garcia Guitron. Soichi Ray Hayashi Junior. Nancy Arango Cervantes. Yashial Heredia Sanchez. Elazar Heredia Carvajal. Stacy Sanchez Cárdenas. Jamie Negrete. Valeria Rojas Felipe. And Catherine Sanchez Cárdenas. So again, I just so proud of their accomplishments. It's something that's going to be with them always, right? Being bilingual is just a gift you take with you. Como dije, ha sido un placer. Espero que los padres estén muy orgullosos de sus hijos y lo que han logrado. So, thank you.
Or any comments? This is a, I enjoy seeing like list grow of students of language proficiency. Outstanding. Thank you, Karina. Oh, Director Howitt.
Before Karina walks away. And I don't want to take anything away because it's so exciting for the kids, but I also would like to say thank you for all of your work in the district over the years. I've absolutely enjoyed everything that you have brought forward for the board, your enthusiasm, your support, and this not common knowledge, but we're going to miss you tremendously. And I hope to be able to visit you and your new site, and I hope you're extremely successful there as well. But you have done a great job for the Gresham Barlow School District, and I wanted to thank you. So thank you for coming tonight, presenting, and thank you for your work.
Next, our staff recognition instructional leader of the year, Mr. Hugh.
Thank you, Chair Peterson. The instructional leader of the year award is to honor instructional leaders who are representative of leaders in the Gresham Barlow School District. This award is not meant to single out any one individual as the best instructional leader in the district, but as an opportunity to celebrate leaders who inspire others. This year, we had six folks that were nominated. Celeste Polici, who's the assistant principal at San Barlow High School. Bruce Schmidt, principal at San Barlow High School. John Cook, executive director for K twelve schools. Sam Moranto, principal at Kelly Creek Elementary School. Carla Gay, executive director for Innovation and Partnerships, and Roland Hated, principal at Gordon Russell Middle School. Three of finalists were brought forward to a final round of interviews with Dr. Pereira, myself, and former instructional leaders of the year, and Dr. Pereira will share the great announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Hugh, board chair and board. This year has undoubtedly been a challenge for everyone. I know we keep saying that over and over again, and I think we're just hoping for us to see that light at the end of the tunnel. I think we're starting to see that, but it's been challenging for teaching, learning, and especially leading during this time and parenting. And last spring, our personal, our personal and professional lives were all turned over upside down truly, as we were asked to do the impossible in a short period of time. And we delivered the best we could, and I mean, none of us had ever had or led or worked during a pandemic, and it was a truly a heavy lift for the team. But they did not question what we needed to do, other than the fact that they wanted to know how we can do it as fast and as best as we possibly can. The capacity to achieve this challenge required collaboration and teamwork, and we had to work together to ensure that the learning continued and our staff and students' needs were met to the best of our abilities. And the summer months didn't bring any relief, as it was also a busy time for our leadership team, many of them who worked ten, twelve, fourteen hours a day. And many skipped their vacations to ensure that we had everything in place for the fall. It took a collaborative effort to open C D L this last fall, and today we're still working closely, almost daily with one another. So tonight, tonight, we don't have an individual to recognize. Instead, I have a pair of team members, because without one another, their leadership would not have been as impactful as it has been. In fact, I could add several more deserving team members to this, but I'll save that for later. But I must honor those who were nominated. So board tonight, please help me recognize our twenty twenty one instructional leaders of the year. It's a tandem team of Carla Gay and Bruce Schmidt. I'll let you stand right there. I'm going to talk about you just a little bit. I just want the public and our board to know that Carla has leveraged new state funds for Measure ninety-eight to create systematic and equitable change by increasing access and opportunities and outcomes for our most marginalized students. She's led the district in aligning multiple pathways extended beyond high school and into middle and elementary years. She's led the collaboration effort of scaled credit recovery and grade completion innovative opportunities for our high school-level students. She's presented locally and nationally on equitable pathways, alternative accountability at the National Forum, and nationally regarding reengagement network, and particularly at John Hopkins University. Carla leads with humility. Her values first, always, multiple perspectives are always at the top of her list. And I'm proud to say that she leads with equity, integrity, and empathy, but truly is an equity warrior. That's Carla Gay. Bruce Schmidt, Bruce, if you are, he's online. Excellent. Bruce is in his seventh year as principal at San Barlow. He was there for an A P for four years. He also served at Gordon Russell Middle School on for three years and a teacher of fourteen years at San Barlow High School and in California. Bruce is nationally a nationally certified teacher. He was Oregon State C T E Administrator of the Year in two thousand and nine. He was Oregon's Music Educator Administrator of the Year in two thousand and twenty. What we say and what we do is impactful, and what we don't say or do is also impactful, is what, quote directly from Bruce. Developed, he developed a robust freshman house structure for San Barlow to support ninth grade transition into high school. He's developed inquiry teams and models at San Barlow and grounded in improvement science to identify root causes of problems and empower his staff to learn and explore by implementing identified strategies. Bruce Schmidt. I don't want to give each a couple of minutes for comments. Bruce will start with you first since you're online. Bruce, if you unmute. Okay, Sarah's got to give him access. So Carla, you're on.
I am not sure what to say except for thank you for the honor. I'm very appreciative of the recognition. I and feel a great deal of humility about being recognized by my peers and my colleagues for the work that I have been leading. I want to make sure and acknowledge my colleagues in the room with me. It like this has absolutely been a team effort on every front from operations to instructions, and none of us could have done this without the other. And we have a lot still to do. I also really need to recognize the team that has pulled and pushed and responded and said, what about this? Help me stay on track with that. What do we do about this? And just keep us moving forward and keeping all the all the oars in the water. So yeah, leadership is not a solo journey at all, and I absolutely feel enormous gratitude and humility for this recognition and really want to share that with everybody that I work with. So thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Bruce?
I do want to thank, I want to thank everyone for the opportunity. Obviously, we all enjoy recognition, but as Carla said, it's truly a team effort. The work that we do is never unsupported, and it's never done. It's never done alone. I have a phenomenal staff that I work with. I have an outstanding administrative team that allows me the runway to think a little bit, to to process ideas and to really try new things to serve our students the best as we possibly can. I also definitely I am humbled as Carla because she has pushed me quite a bit this year. The district team has pushed me quite a bit this year to be really reflective to focus on how I see things, the way I view things with an equity lens, and how I need to sometimes change the way that I think to better serve students. So I am super appreciative of their work, their support, and always, always doing the best for those who need the most. And I am really proud of of the work that we're doing at Barlow. I'm really proud to work for the Gresham Barlow School District. And we do have work to do, but we've done some amazing things over the last sixteen months in the hopes that we could engage students and and make the experience as best as possible. So I do thank you very much, and I appreciate the honor.
For Justin's, who's one of our partners, district partners, will help us recognize these leaders with an instructional leader of the year ring. Of course, not knowing who it was at that time, we obviously need to get their ring sizes, and that was things will be awarded at convocation. I also want to take a moment to exercise a little bit of superintendent's privilege, if I might. Being this be the last board meeting. I would like to, I would actually like to recognize the entire D L T team for Above and Beyond the Call of Duty recognition for our district. This team. They've done some outstanding work. Their efforts have just been impeccable. This ongoing unprecedented times, they have been innovative. They have been present. They have been dedicated. Their service was far none, their advocacy for our students and our teachers, their commitment, and the belief that our staff and students could do just about anything was impressive to me, the superintendent. I'd like to recognize you all. I'm going to stand up and clap because that's just what I want to do. Your work, your work has been outstanding. As I don't have an award right now, I will. Thank you, Chair. That concludes all of my recognitions for exceptional leaders.
Thank you. Next up is the O S A A Solo Music State Championship from Gresham High School, Mr. Cook.
You, Chair. In an effort to recognize students who achieve state champion stat status or its equivalent in activities and academic programs, tonight, the board and administration has the opportunity to recognize state champion musicians from Gresham High School. In collaboration with the Oregon Music Education Association, the O S A A conducted a, the twenty twenty-one O S A A Solo Music State Championship event, May third, or May third through seventh, twenty twenty-one. This rating-style event highlights and provides exceptional feedback for students who qualify for the event. Results were posted on May eighth, rated outstanding, which is a five ninety-four to six twenty-five out of six hundred and sixty points. Skylar Bolster, senior tenor voice. Natalie Harada, senior soprano voice. And Brody Joseph, senior bass voice. Congratulations to all three of them, and if you are here, raise your hands up on the line, or if you're inside, you may stand.
Next for for San Barlow High School, Mr. Cook.
Similar competition, I'll read the second paragraph this time. In collaboration with the Oregon Music Education Association, the O S A A conducted the twenty twenty-one O S A A Solo Music State Championship event, May third through seventh, twenty twenty-one. This rating-style event highlights and provides exceptional feedback for students who qualify for the event. Results were posted on May eighth, rated superior, Andrew Schroeder, senior baritone voice. Rated outstanding, Robbie Johnson, senior low saxophone. Congratulations to both of them as well.
Congratulations to the students. Next for Mount Hood Conference, Mr. Cook, Gresham High School.
Thirteenth choir students from Mount Hood Conference, M H C, submitted solo performances for adjudication. This competition not only names district champions, but also names qualified students for state competition. While there will not be a competitive state solo competition this year, the choir was still able to qualify several performers for state adjudication, feedback, and Mount Hood Conference honors. Each performer submitted a pre-recorded piece of performed music for adjudication. On April fifth, the school was notified of the following results. Mount Hood Conference winners and choir, Brody Joseph, senior first-place bass voice. Michael Teves, junior, second-place bass voice. Natalie Harada, senior first-place soprano voice. Haley Beagle, sophomore, second-place soprano voice. Skylar Bolster, senior first-place tenor voice. Kyra McLeod, junior, first-place mazosoprano voice. Jaden Altifor, Altorfer, pardon me, senior first-place alto voice. Kyra Carhino, I believe, and I'm sorry, Kyra, if I mispronounced that, junior second-place alto voice. Johnny Puké, sophomore, second-place baritone voice. Congratulations to all of these students as well.
Then Mr. Cook, Northwest Science Expo International Science and Engineering Fair, Gresham High School.
Thank you, Chair. Since two thousand and ten, Gresham High School has hosted the Gresham Barlow Science Expo. The G B S E is one of eight regional science expos that are affiliated with the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair, I S E F, and features students student science and engineering projects from Gresham Barlow High Schools and other high schools throughout Oregon. Projects from the G B S E can advance to the state levels level science fair. The Northwest Science Expo held at Portland State University held virtually this year. This year, three projects also advanced to the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair, which is also held virtually this year. Advancing from the G B S E to the N W S E was Lee Duong, G H S Junior, and her project, Engineering a Robotic Arm, and Jordan Michael, G H S Senior, with her product project, pardon me, The Effect of Concentration of Abuscular Mycorrhizol Symbiosis. This is why she's doing the project and I'm not on plant growth and Facilios vulgaris. And heaven knows, that's why I didn't do science. I just want to point that out for everybody. Jordan also advanced to I S E F, which was held virtually this year. May sixteenth through twenty-one, and these two students and those project are why the world have hope as compared to me. Okay. Congratulations to both of them.
Thank you, Mr. Cook, and congratulations to these students, and I'll just reiterate, thank you for representing your community so well. We look forward to a future that looks something like our past, where we could see you here, and we could shake your hand and tell you that in person. Hopefully, that comes very soon. Finally, and this one's me, so Mr. Cook gets a break. Matt O'Connell and Robin Stowers' terms as members of the Gresham Brothers School District Board of Directors end on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. In recognition of Director O'Connell's and Director Stowers' service on the board and for their dedication to the patrons, students of the district, a presentation will be made during board meeting. That's what I believe I'm supposed to facilitate. I'm Director O'Connell's in attendance, so we'll focus. So we have a plaque to give to you, and then I imagine that all of us will just roast you for a while and sending you off the way that you'd like to be sent off, but let's get the plaque over with, and then let's, let's talk. So I have a, I didn't read the inscription on the plaque, which I should have, but one of the keynotes is, it reads from two thousand and eight. Is that when you were first appointed? Through two thousand and twenty-one. So Matt has served on this board for thirteen years. He serves students. Watched his own kids grow up in the district, and now is embarking on a life of seeing his grandkids grow up outside of it perhaps. So Matt, I'll kick us off by just saying you were my mentor when I first came on the board. And I think this highlights, so I'm, this isn't, this isn't actually a roast, but Matt actually endorsed my opponent in my first election. And then who's? He was an outstanding community member, to be clear. And so then, when I was brought onto the board, Matt was the first one to sign up to mentor me, which I think is evidence, and since that time, I've worked so well with you that we could be, have a difference that's as stark as having your name beside somebody else in a, in a voter's pamphlet, and then we could work together, that I could learn from you with your intense preparation. I think is the biggest thing I've learned from you, is how prepared you would come to meetings, particularly over budget, financial. There was nothing that, that Mike Schofield could, could slip by, and he wouldn't try. But sometimes, you know, when the community entrusts you in this capacity, that level of preparation is, is what's expected, but not always delivered. And Matt always delivered on that. And so I'm so grateful for, for getting to learn from you for these last four years, and, and wish you the best, and will, will personally miss you.
Along those lines, Jordan, I see that we have my favorite topic on tonight, which is paid lunch equity. So we'll have lots of conversations about that. I think, what's his name? Not before, Mike, between Mike. Nelson, yeah, Jerry. He got so frustrated with me one year that he actually brought like a forty-two-page document that he was going to present, and I decided that I was not going to push it.
Yeah, I've been, long-term, I've been with Matt the whole time, so twelve. I didn't realize it was thirteen, but twelve years, what sticks in my mind. And we worked hard on the bond together and had excellent work with that. And absolutely, on those finance questions, you would ask them in a way that would bring it to a clarification and not just, you understood what it was, but you also made sure that we understood what the answer was at the same time. So I appreciated that. And I know you're going to have a great time with your next stages in life, with grandbabies and activities and things. So you will be missed on this board, and I appreciate your service all these years.
I've known this guy and with his family, as well as with my daughter. And we have traveled from far and wild. We've, yeah, softball. We were, we were just lighting up the world. And, and, but this guy is one who is kind. One woo will tell you if you're screwing up, and which I think everybody needs to realize that we need to do that, with that. And, but I am, I'm happy that he's staying here. But I know that we will be seeing you time and time again. And to just be part of, part of Gresham and do our work and make things happen. And with, with, again, the superintendent sighting we might need to have or something, you know, you might just jump right into that seat. So, great. I, I love you, basically. It's, we've been together a long, long time. So thanks.
Matt? Yeah, yeah, please.
Well, thanks a lot for all the things that you said. I've actually really enjoyed serving on this board. Just to let you know, it's been four thousand six hundred fifty-six days since I was appointed, which is four point, or twelve point seven five years. Sorry, I'm going to take this off. This is driving me crazy. So what's just, what's really interesting is when I interviewed for the board position back in, probably was August of two thousand and eight, it was when Bob Lilly moved to Bend. Is that right? August, or, and that was kind of a rough time for our family because we were right in the middle of the recession. I had lost my job for fourteen years, and I was very involved in the school district at the time. I was in the budget committee. I always loved that part of it. And I had to do some reflection. This is really what I wanted to do in this time in my life is I'm struggling to find a job and supporting three kids and a mortgage and, and, you know, credit cards and car payments and everything. And I decided that there's always times that are going to be tough. So I just decided to move forward. So one of the things that I remember the most, and I think Chris is the one that mentioned this, was that I would lose every Thursday. And that is so true. I have, but just to give you a sense of what was going on on Thursdays at that time, ER was still on. Does anybody remember ER? My wife and I had loved to watch that show, so we had to no longer watch it pretty. It was actually off the air not too long afterwards, but we didn't enjoy this. At the time, when I was appointed, my oldest was fifteen. And now she's married and has four children and manages a staff of thirty-five people. My middle daughter was twelve and has a six-month-old and has a successful career at Costco, moving up the chain. She's a supervisor now, looking for management position. My youngest was eight, which is hard to believe because he's six foot three. He finishes his junior year of college right now, and he'll be getting married one year today. So June third, two thousand and twenty-two, and the funny thing is, they were calling it their negative one anniversary. So, and I'm very thankful for the support of my family over the last twelve point seven five years or four thousand six hundred fifty-six days because there are many sporting events that I missed because I was here doing boardwork. But it was, it was all for good reasons. For, so, over the last, probably, well, the last couple of years that I've been on the board, I've actually gone, had the opportunity to serve with other board members other than our core here. Chris will remember these. Dave LeDrick, he was the board chair when, my first year here. John Eddy, actually, he was the board member that I went to when this position came open and said, what does this position entail? And he says, a lot of studying. Dan Christensen, John Hartsog, Kathy Ruthriff, and Jeff Kips. And so really, if you think about it, that's a pretty small list of people over twelve and a half years, twelve, three-quarter years. So there's not a lot of turnover on this board. And that's a testament to how the district's run. Which is great. Terms of superintendent, I put Ken Noah on there because actually I didn't serve under him, but in budget committee I did. For a long time. That's actually, he had a very, he was a great speaker. Just loved to listen to him speak, and he could just talk your ear off. And so he always interested, he actually kind of got me interested in more of the budgets, or the, the side of the things. John Minor, of course, Jim Slatter, and then Dr. Praha, which I've all enjoyed working with everybody, as well as all the district staff. Almost done. So a couple of the most memorable events that come to mind, I was putting some of this together last night, and it's not all negative. But we've, it seems like we, year after year after year after year, serious budget issues, serious budget issues, and it's got so tiring of dealing with the budget issues. And it actually led to the teacher strike, if you always remember that, our very short-term teacher strike. Carly and Chris, you probably remember this. Remember our sunglasses guy right over there? A little freaky. I think we had bulletproof stuff after that. So we talked about bonds. Many of you may or may not remember, we actually had a bond campaign a number of years ago, I called our first bond campaign. I knew we were in trouble when we did not make the voter's pamphlet. Very bad move. So that led me, when the opportunity came up, I think Jim was kind of, Jim Slatter was pushing me and said, I think you need to be the chair or the co-chair of the committee. And at that point, it was, we, we needed to get the schools rebuilt so badly that I remember saying yes. Had our first meeting of my wife's business, because I think we got locked out here. There was something wrong with the district. I can't remember what, what the problem was. We ended up doing a quick meet-in at my wife's business. But mostly, I remember about the bond campaign was knocking on doors on Saturday morning with four high school kids. Browsing them out of bed to go knock on doors was a Herculean feat, but it was successful. Thank God. And finally, some of the most important memorable things of being a board member is giving diplomas to our students. That is always, has given me goosebumps every time I get a diploma out. And fortunately, because my kids were fairly spaced, I knew most of the kids that I gave diplomas to. I always loved going to the structured skill center and giving the diplomas right over here. That was awesome to do. I think Carly, you did that a couple of years with me. And finally, well, I said finally, anyway. One of the last things that was memorable is actually giving my children their diploma. You can't go any better than that. I know many people on this board have done that before. As interesting is, my middle daughter still keeps that picture on, of that event on her desk to this day. Actually sent it to her a couple of months ago to say, hey, look at this. Because I found it going through old photos, and she goes, it's already up my desk. I've had it there for years. So I just want to thank all of you, everybody in this room and everybody out there for the most, the last twelve point seven five years or four thousand six hundred days or whatever, that has actually been very enjoyable. And the last couple of meetings, I'm like, gosh, I don't know if I really want to quit. But it's time for me to do things, because I do have five grandchildren now. Kind of my joke this year was five before fifty. She had five before fifty, but I did. But we've been doing a lot of traveling the last couple of months, our last couple of years. So my board attendance has not been as much as I would like. So it's time for me to move on and do bigger and better things. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I just wanted to express my appreciation as well. Many people don't know this, but Matt and I are birthday twins. Both July twentieth, nineteen something, something. Let's just say, man, we were a year old when man landed on the moon. But nonetheless, I wanted to say thank you for having belief and confidence in me to lead this district four years ago, and for your constant and ongoing support throughout the whole process. You have been truly a champion for many kids in this district, and I think Gresham is better because of leaders such as yourself, truly this board as a whole. And thank you for making me think differently and prepare differently for finance, because I knew, tried to guess some of the questions that you would ask, so that we would be prepared. And Mike and I would inspire that so much necessarily with Jordan, because they kind of have the routine now. But with Mike, definitely, I was like, okay, what do you think Matt's going to ask today? Or, or not, or, and now it's what will Blake and Mike, Matt ask for it. Nonetheless, during finance, but again, I want to thank you and wish you well in your ventures with your grandchildren and returning to Montana. Good luck. We're both going to be wearing cowboy boots, just in different places. Thank you, Chair, for the delivery.
Well, that, that moves us right to your, to your update, Dr. Praha. So time's been set aside for the superintendent to provide a brief update. So.
At this time, Chair, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cook for an update, and then I'll have a share once he's done.
Thank you, Superintendent Praha. I am certain that the board is excited to see one more metrics update going into the end, end of the summer. Because I think we started this tradition in October. I've enjoyed it. The, as we get to the second slide here, you'll notice the same trend that I've been showing you for the last past several weeks is still occurring and drastically so in a positive way. We continue to have fewer and fewer cases. Even two days ago, we had a hundred and forty statewide, which is outstanding. As vaccinations continue, I am confident that we will be in full return coming to next year, and that's correspondence will be going out to the community tomorrow about that, so that you're aware of that. Again, not to relive all this, positivity rates are coming down. If I, if you want to advance to the next slide, Sarah. Positivity rates are down, case rates are down. We are in really, really good shape. The third slide, or the fourth slide, pardon me, is similar to the one I showed you last week because we hadn't gotten updated data from the MESD when I prepared this presentation for you. So I don't have data other than what was last week, so now you have that. But as far as I know, Michelle, we have not had a substantial amount of cases. Okay? So we're in good shape. And we're in really good shape moving into the graduation ceremonies.
Could I, could I ask a question about that? Is there any onsite transmission of these cases have any been transmitted onsite?
Not, no, none that's been reported to us yet.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Yeah, thank you. I also wanted to just thank the community. I wanted to take the opportunity, thank student, staff, and families and, and the community at this time for their tremendous efforts and reflect on a little bit of what we've accomplished as a district and a team. You know, I, I came here in twenty seventeen, and I've just, I've never been welcomed in the community as I was welcomed when I came here to Gresham. And I've just really been appreciative of that. Since then, our graduation rates have increased, which is what you charged me to do as I arrived. You charged me to try and engage the community more, and hopefully I've done that to a pleasing level of what you have expected. I've engaged community and business and education stakeholders. We've created new preschool, the post-secondary career success frameworks, thanks to Carla and her team and our efforts. Dual-language immersion programs that has expanded to both Highland and North Gresham Elementary and offering some students from Hollydale an opportunity to attend North for the dual-language. Karina and her team has led a lot of those efforts, and it's just really pleasing to see these young kids grasp to a language that, like they were, you know, speaking a hundred percent of the time in their homes at this point in the school year. It's a really beautiful thing to watch. The district has completed, of course, ninety-five percent of the projects in the bond for the twenty sixteen program on time, on budget, and to include construction of two replacement schools, the renovation of two high schools, along with other campus renovations that also included installation of safety and security measures, as well as, and our middle schools will have STEM labs coming this fall that are being completed now. And I'm perhaps mostly proud of the way we've all come together over the last year. You know, they say when you struggle, you bond a little, little deeper. And I think that bond has truly happened with this team, as well as with the board. It's been a challenging year, but it's been one that we've really truly had to depend and lean upon each other. And as I say farewell, I want to take the opportunity to share some words of encouragement, and thanks to our students. I like to encourage each of our students to continuously look for ways to learn, to adapt, and to repeat that process, because those are life skills that you can't learn in textbook at all. Those are life, life things that'll help you be successful no matter what. to adapt and to repeat that process, because those are life skills that you can't learn in textbook at all. Those are life, life things that'll help you be successful no matter what. To our graduating seniors as well, like your peers, you've overcome so many uncertainties, you've extended grace over and over again. And the most heartbreaking reality is that they've missed out on a lot of traditional path, rights of passage as a student. However, the lessons of resiliency again and flexibility are invaluable in adulthood. To the staff, you've extended yourself beyond over and over again. And we had to pivot last fall without fail, if you will, and you quickly adjusted without question. So thank you for your dedication. Our teachers as well as our principals, our building leaders, you all truly are the unsung heroes of, of this community in our district. You are attending to our community's most precious resource, which is our students. To our school board, I can attribute every bit of my dedication to this district and the amount of success that we've had, not only to our staff, but definitely to you and your ongoing support in our efforts and what we do. You've continued to support and serve this community. And that is to be commended, because you do that without any pay at all and hardly any recognition. You're clear. You're focused. You have given me a direction throughout my time here to keep the main thing, the main thing, and that's our kids. And I've tried to do that as well. And to our community, the amount of grace and flexibility that you've extended throughout my tenure is especially heartwarming for me. And I'm grateful. And I think as I conclude my time here in GBSD, I look forward to celebrating the class of 2021 at their graduation ceremonies. We truly be one to remember. And again, thank you for your incredible opportunity, incredible opportunity and the pleasure to serve this community. I really appreciate the opportunity. And it's bittersweet. Family comes first. I preach it all the time. I don't always live up to it. And my team knows that. Now it's time for me to do that. Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, Dr. Praha, we have a send off gift for you. And I think it's, it's, wouldn't be right for me to just walk up and hand it to you. So I'm going to ask the whole, the whole board to join me. And after we do this, I'm sure we'll have some remarks. So or let's just rally, let's rally at the picture point.
I, I, I think this, I'm sorry, I have one more superintendent's privilege to use, I think. And it's without fail that I also recognize my better half who allows me to do this and sacrificed a lot of time with me, without me, so that I could be here to serve this community. And so I would be remiss if I did not recognize my better half, Rajiv.
Thanks, sweetheart.
Well, I, I'm going to open it to the board. So what? I certainly have something to share, but I didn't write anything down, and that's going to be a danger. So I'm going to keep it brief. Catrice, my version of brief, I guess, but you're going to be incredibly missed. That's from the, from the board representing the community telling you, you're going to be terribly missed. 30,000 foot view. The mark of a, of a leader. Well, we joined this effort at the same time, four years ago with students first. I remember introducing myself freshly after election results were certified. You had just arrived and we were at a community event in Powell Valley and could have never imagined what our last year would have held at that time. And I think the, the real mark of a leader is when you arrive out of the crisis, if you look back and say that was the right person to lead us, that's a superior mark of a leader. And that's exactly who you've been. So I can tell you from the 30,000 foot view, your community will miss you. Thank you for preparing a strong team of leaders for this work to continue. That takes the bite out of it just a little bit, but not, not a lot. Where the bite hits heavier is when I take the 30,000 foot board view out of it, and it's just a human view. And my whole life, I've called Gresham home. It's not always been home. It's not always been where I've lived, but it's always been home. And, and I went to school in New York and I lived in France and lived lived sort of in Iraq, Kuwait, Korea. Everywhere I went, so proud of my community. And I couldn't understand why everybody wouldn't just pack up and move to Oregon and to Gresham. I couldn't figure it out. And, and we've come on, on hard times and and I think some of us who, for whom this community is very dear to us, we, we hear the comments and it stings when people say, well, I'm just getting out of there. So then we got a world-class leader who chose to move into our community. A world-class neighbor, somebody who is kind and accomplished, driven, others first. And said, this is my community. And I don't think you know what stamp that puts on people like me who want what's best for this community. When we deliver what's best for our community, and that's been what you've been. So I'm going to miss you terribly as a superintendent with kids in the district. But I'll tell you, I'm going to miss you even worse as a neighbor and just, just the person that you are. And so I wish you every, every success in Texas. And, and I'm so happy for the community that gets to receive you there. But just know that you'll be, you'll be bitterly missed by me. Thanks, Catrice.
I'm going to go before I start crying. So I was part of the, the search committee that did the work looking for what we need to move the district forward. We had had our bond and we knew that we were going to have activities that were going to happen. And we knew that we needed to continue moving and growing in a way that we maybe hadn't done in the past. We've had good superintendents before. We were ready for, for an even better superintendent. And we worked hard for that. And I didn't realize at the time. So I could put my mask up here, that would work. What a great superintendent we're going to get. And I'll be honest, I don't think I have cried when any of our other superintendents left. I know there's a few people in this room who have been here long enough with me to know they were good superintendents, but they were, they were employees. They were people who worked for the district. They were people that were here. Catrice, I've considered my friend. And also sometimes the one who's given me honest feedback when I needed it, support, encouraging, recognition, a leader and a partner to the board. She's provided opportunities for staff to shine. This was not a one woman show. This was a team that wanted to be successful and you have been. And I also think about the work that you've done, both in the regional level as well as the state level. You amplified the work of the Gresham Barlow School District when, when the word first got out that you were leaving. And it was comments and, and distress of, it's your district, but what about this? And what about this? And she's part of this and part of that. You just came in and said, Oregon is my home. And I want the best for all children. And you brought that forward in a way that I don't think we're going to easily forget. And, and not said lightly, but you are more than our superintendent. You are the ambassador for the Gresham Barlow School District. You said, we're doing great things, but we're not done. We have more things to do. And I have absolutely appreciated what you've done as you've worked with us through very difficult this last year of, of that, the COVID in and out and doing and, and having to change. And we still did it. And now the excitement moving forward, we're just going to have to keep you up to date on that. Thank you, Rajiv, for letting her come to all of these meetings and be a part of it. And I did look up where the school district is that you are, and I will come for a site visit, I believe. That's, that's part of what school board members learn from other school boards. So I will definitely come see you. But it has been, it has been an absolute pleasure to work with you. And I wish you the best in your future endeavors, but I'm also going to miss you and, and I'm sad that you're leaving us, but you're leaving us well positioned for the future for this district as well. Thank you.
Well, I am a huge fan of that woman, Dr. Praha. It was a great day for me when she, she came to Gresham and, and we went and to Sunny Hawn's. So she would become a Greshamite. But you know, I, friends are, are good. And, and, and there are certain friends that are better than others. And I cannot tell you how much I have, I respect you. I want to work with you. I'm sorry you're leaving, but we can take care of that. But I also want to thank you. You were a real person that worked with me on the legislature. I felt that it was a, a gift for the, how you were, did you work here at Gresham? And I was in Salem, doing my work. And it just, it just melded together for what we did and what we talked about and what we worked, talked about the students and the kids and, and the needs that we needed to take care of. And again, I was grateful to have the legislative work that I, I did to make some of that great stuff happen for Gresham. Well, I'll never forget. I will never forget my boots. That I, that I, they're blue and they're real pretty. And I will, they're, we stand with me forever. So best of luck. I know you're going to do great wherever you go. And thank you so much. I, I, again, call you a very good friend.
Going to roster now? So I didn't have, I didn't make any prepared comments, but I was making a couple of notes. First of all, I was also on the, the committee to, and on the board at the time when we hired you. And as Chris alluded to, when we were looking for a superintendent, we were looking for somebody who would put us in a different trajectory. We had just passed the bond. The school, the districts were, the district was on sound, sound footing. And we just needed a leader to make a strategic shift in our direction. And I will tell you, you have done that. You've done exactly what we were looking for. I think you're, in my mind, you're the best hire we've ever had. I love all the superintendents I've worked with before, but you did exactly what I was looking for. You're an innovator. You're a communicator. All the, one of the, some of the best things I think you've done for Gresham Barlow and for Gresham is creating that business school partnership that was lacking prior to this. Just you're, I mean, we have the just, I just, there's so much support from the community now from Gresham as a whole for Gresham Barlow that we didn't have anymore. You are going to be truly missed. Birthday twin. Well, thank you. And I get it while you're doing this for family, because you and I have had many conversations about family and how important family is. So you're doing it for the right reasons.
Um, I didn't really prepare anything either. It just, it just feels so much more real now since we're having this conversation that you're leaving and this is the last time you're going to be here. But I remember when I, you know, first got on the board and everything, you took me right in under your wing, you know, any, any questions I had, you know, you would listen to them. No matter how ridiculous they were, you were even my therapist a few times. I don't pay you for that. No. But and you're just an amazing leader and healer. I can tell that, you know, you just see problems and you would just work on them right away. No judgment. And I feel like leadership like yours is incredibly rare to come by. Yeah, sorry. Echoing what everyone else said, you know, I think we're all aware that we're we're losing an amazing asset. The next superintendent has really big shoes to fill. But I think you set us up for success. Whenever anyone wants to talk about the Gresham Barlow School District at the state level or anything, I always say that I am, I think that everything that we have done as a district, we've always made the right decisions with your leadership. And yeah, no, I hardly have any critiques from anything. So no, you're incredible. And I know you'll keep doing great things. And I got to visit you in Texas one day. I've never even been out there. So it's going to happen. So it's at the end, but I'm really excited for you.
I'm going to pass.
Mr. Hugh.
Thank you, Chair. So been asked to share a recognition for Dr. Praha in her last board meeting this evening. The district leadership team has put some money together and got you a gift card for your travels to, to Texas. But we also wanted to send you away with a, a gift from, from us to you. You know, my better half, she does these lays that she makes. And this is for you to take on your journey to Texas from Hawaii through Oregon. But you know, we want you to memorize us as a very high functioning team who has done a lot of good work because of your leadership. Gresham Barlow School District is definitely a better place because of your leadership. And we're going to miss you. We're not going to say goodbye. We're going to say, we'll see you later. And a term we like to talk about in Hawaii is aloha is goodbye, but we'll see you soon. This is one lay from with the Gresham Barlow School District pin and logo for you to remember us by. And there's also another lay that actually has, I don't know this other school district that you might be going to somewhere in Texas with orange and black and, and, and white. But thank you very much for your leadership. And I'm going to ask the district leadership team to stand up and recognize your
Catrice, I have one more. I didn't tell you the truth early. One more liberty. I'm going to turn that over to James.
I promise that's it.
So this evening, we have an opportunity to say not goodbye, but we'll see you later to a couple of colleagues. The first one, I'm going to ask is Karina Brusasi to go ahead and stand up on, on the top of the stage, but it is with a heavy heart that we say goodbye to a friend, a colleague, a thought partner, Karina Brusasi. Want you to know how important you have been to our team here in the Gresham Barlow School District. Your high level of enthusiasm has kept us engaged and focused. Your humility has set an example for us to follow. Your adventurous spirit has brought new ideas and new ways of thinking. Your selfless ways of giving credit to others, even when you deserve the credit yourself, reminded us what servant leadership really is.
Your objectivity has helped us to keep an open mind. And your careful, deliberate manner of speaking has taught us that deep connections are what building, build bridges is about. More than anything else, your steadfast dedication to our students, particularly those who have experienced the most barriers is a legacy you will leave here in the Gresham Barlow School District. Thank you for being you, a great team member, a fabulous educator, a thought partner, an example for all of us to follow. Good luck to you in the next adventure as principal at Milwaukee's El Puente Dual Language Immersion School in the North Platte School District. Congratulations. Okay, our next colleague that we want to recognize this evening, Ms. Lakeisha Washington, or as she is known on Twitter, at MS Wash Leads. And yes, she does lead. Lakeisha joined the Gresham Barlow School District in January of 2020 as a leader in teaching and learning, supporting our secondary schools just months before the pandemic. Little did she know what would lie ahead. Lakeisha dove into her new role, bringing a deep instructional background, strong understanding of pedagogy and a passion for learning. She is an advocate for others, has high expectations and will ask questions that make individuals and teams reflect on how to do and be better. Lakeisha enjoys a good laugh, has an incredible vocabulary, and she loves to use it. And she appreciates creativity and quirk, quirkiness, and loves to add a little pizzazz and flair to all that she does. Lakeisha has been a tremendous asset to our team and we wish her the best of luck in her next adventure. Lakeisha is going to be the executive director of teaching and learning for the Lake Oswego School District. Lakeisha, congratulations and good luck.
Chair, that concludes my my liberties today, so.
All right, we are, we're gonna recess and come back at eight twenty five PM. In recess, come back at eight twenty five. Thanks, everybody. Okay, we're gonna reconvene. Next up is a committee meeting minutes for the policy review committee meeting that was on May thirteenth. That's included in the board packet for review. And we're gonna move on to association reports. First up with the Gresham Barlow Education Association, Red Hyman. Thanks for joining us, Red.
Thank you, Board Chair. Thank you, everyone. Board of Directors, appreciate your time tonight. Superintendent Pereira have a couple of things to share tonight. Last week at your board work session, there was a proposal brought forward to you to discuss our medical fragile members. And during that discussion or lack of discussion, there were some questions that some members had about that situation that was going on. And I About that situation that was going on, and I just want to let you know that we remain. Our, our door is always open, we would love to meet and chat with you about that invitation has been sent. So if we would love to meet with you to share the facts and misinformation that might be out there or the clarifying question that you might have about that. So I just want to let you know that we remain ready to meet with you when that can happen. Moving on to other things, it's, you know, an evening of recognitions tonight, as I have noticed, and all of those recognitions are well deserved. But I think we have two recognitions that I want to make, and first is our families that have endured so much since March of last year. And being a teacher and just seeing the, the hard hardships that our, our families have, have endured this year with the pandemic and with the online learning and all the questions and the, the no answers and just kind of just how things just changed from one hour to the next, or from one day to the next, or from one week to the next. I just wanted to recognize our families and our students out there in the Gresham Barlow School District who have gone through a ton. Since March of last year, and here's to a great fall with hopefully five days. Back to work. And for our students to be able to be there in five days a week and all day, every day. And my second recognition is to our teachers. I represent 600 members in the Gresham Barlow School District and our teachers, just like our families have had to endure a ton pivoting from one thing to the next, trying to learn how to use canvas and to Google Classroom. And to all the different things that have been thrown at our teachers, they have really shined through all of this. And I think you realize that, and I think you know that, but I just want to give a shout out. The words don't really describe what our teachers have had to go through since March of last year. And I just want to give a big shout out to all of our teachers who have done so much, who have continued to push our students. Who have continued to have our students grow through all of this, even with the online learning and then pivoting to hybrid and bringing our students in for the two and a half hours. In elementary school, which has been a nice way to end of the year, but just a big shout out to our families, our students and to our teachers who have done an amazing job this year. And here's to a much better fall 2021. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is OSEA and Tia Ross.
Hi, thank you, Chair Peterson, fellow members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Pereira. We would like to thank Matt O'Connell for all of his years of service to our families and community. I had no idea it was 13 years. That's amazing. We also would like to wish Robin Stowers of good luck in her future ventures. And on a personal note, we still do feel really sad to be losing Dr. Pereira, and we just hope Texas knows how lucky they are to be getting her back. And that is all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, yeah. Okay, our this time Susan's request of the board. And I want to make sure I'm really clear. So at the outset of this meeting, as I introduce this agenda item, I told you that unfortunately, because of the volume. Of interest that we received, we wouldn't have anybody reading their comments into. At this meeting publicly, we received 35 a public engagement. Emails or comments. And so those are available, those are in public record, and so I want to make sure that folks know how to navigate to that. If you go to our district website, which is gresham.k12.or.us. Go under. Board information. Right there, there's a banner ad kind of looking thing that says board docs, and that's where all of our agendas. Since we converted a couple of years ago to this digital format, all of our agenda items are there. If you go into today's regular board business meeting, June 3rd, regular board business meeting. You can navigate in the agenda down to item H1, which is guidelines for public comment. And under there, if you submitted a comment, you can see yours there. That is how the board, unless you email us directly, that's how the board reviews before meetings. And we have. And that is how the public can see the engagement that we've received and. And so I just want to say thank you to everybody who continues to engage the board. Some folks are. Are people who have engaged us in many ways this past year in particular, I think if there's been a a silver lining to this pandemic. And a virtual meeting that all of us would say 100% is, is a really ineffective way. To run a public meeting of this virtual format. What it has enhanced is the level of community engagement that we receive. And so I just want to thank everybody for doing that and, and continue to encourage you to engage the board. I don't want you to feel like just because you're not reading your comments, they haven't been read because they very much have. And, and your perspective isn't valuable as we consider what is best for our students, our families and our community. So. Anyway, those comments are available, 35 of them. That we received before 5pm today. And so if you'd like to have a comment submitted, again, email Avery, Sarah Avery, which is averyfor@gresham.k12.org.us. By 5pm the day of the meeting. Okay, so thank you, everyone, for your engagement. We have a series of action items. First is item I1, which is a budget adoption, making appropriations and imposing the taxes. And I'm going to turn this over to Jordan Neely.
Thank you, Chair Peterson. I'll just start by saying this is all very legalese language, and I apologize for that. These are just words that need to be said, so. With local budget law, the governing body can adopt the budget only after the budget hearing has been completed. The authority and responsibility given the governing body to adopt the budget and to make appropriations by which the budget is administered is Oregon Revised Statute 294.435. The proposed budget was approved by the Budget Committee on May 20th, 2021. To comply with the requirements of Oregon Revised Statutes, the school board needs to adopt the 2021-2022 budget, make appropriations and impose and categorize the taxes prior to July 1, 2021. The Gresham Barlow School District must appropriate legally adopted budget amounts for 2021 to 2022. Prior to making expenditures or transfers in accordance with Oregon Revised Statute 294.435. Staff have attached a series of resolutions for the board's consideration and recommend approval. Of these resolutions.
This is a three series motion. So I'll move to approve the resolution 2022-01 adopting the budget in the amount, in the total amount of 255,292,881 dollars.
Okay, it's been moved by Director O'Connell, seconded by Director Howitt. I'm going to read it as, as here, but if I misstate the motion, you let me know. To ratify resolution 2022-01 to adopt the budget for the 2021-22 fiscal year. In the total amount of 255,292,881 dollars now on file at the district's administrative business office. Is that representation? Okay. Okay, any discussion about that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
All right, I'll move to ratify resolution 2022-02 to appropriate funds in the amount and purposes outlined in the resolution for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021.
It's been moved by Director O'Connell, seconded by Director Howitt to ratify resolution 2022-02 to appropriate funds in the amount and purposes as outlined in the resolution for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021. Any discussion? All those in favor? I, any opposed?
All right, I'll finish it off. I'll move to ratify resolution 2022-03 to impose taxes provided for the adoption or adopted budget at the permanent rate of 4.5268 per 1,000 of assessed value. For general fund operations and to impose taxes, the amount of 21,323,785 dollars for bonded debt, making these taxes hereby imposed and categorized for tax year 2021 through 2022 upon assessed value of all taxable property within the district.
All right, it's been moved by Director O'Connell, seconded by Director Howitt to ratify resolution 2022-03 to impose the taxes provided for the adopted budget at the permanent rate of 4.5268 dollars per thousand dollars of assessed value. For general fund operations and to impose taxes in the amount of 21,323,785 dollars for bonded debt. Making these taxes hereby imposed and categorized for the tax year 2021, 2022 upon the assessed value of all taxable property within the district. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Want to thank the Budget Committee for, for helping us along this, this road with some good questions and some good process improvements. That, that will be incorporated this coming year. Okay, next up is alternative education programs, and this has Michelle Cook's name on it.
Evening Chair, Board, Superintendent Ferreira. So this spring, a multi-district team evaluated alternative programs in Multnomah County to determine whether they should be included as an alternative program for district approval. The evaluation process covered, process covers required sets, required sets is set forth by the Oregon Department of Education. Any alternative programs under consideration must already have met ODE accreditation criteria. The attached list of alternative programs is being recommended for continuation to the 21 2022 school year, and these programs have met the evaluation criteria described above. You'll see that we did add an update because there was one that's recently been approved that met the ODE accreditation criteria, so we added that in there so you have that information as well.
And is that the, the cartini one? Is that the only one that got added?
That's the only one that got added.
And were there any that were removed?
No.
Okay. So I would move to approve the recommended alternative education programs for 2021, 2022 as presented in the revised update on June 3rd, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Howitt, seconded by Director O'Connell to approve the recommended alternative education programs for 2021, 22 as presented in the updated June 3rd document. Any discussion?
And I know that I do say this every year, but it's for clarification so that the people listening know these are programs that are determined for placement for students by their needs. They're not programs that parents can choose for their child. That is, I see Mr. Cook nodding his head, so just clarification that these are what we use in support of the children, not for parents to pick.
Yeah, the Cartini, Cartini clinic is something that if a student can be assigned by a medical provider. But our responsibility is providing education while they're in that placement.
Any other discussion? Yeah, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Next is tuition and fees for 2021, 22 school year. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Chair. Jordan and I will tag team this a bit. The proposed tuition and student fees for fiscal year 2021, 22 are detailed below. Staff plan to utilize SFR funds to offset the estimated 270,000 of revenue lost by the not charging any student participation fees in the 2021, 22 school year. Increasing access to co-curricular and extracurricular activities is one way the district is working to support the social emotional needs of students. I will tell the board that as we continue to dive into this, that $270,000 number in there is inaccurate, it's more, it's closer to 500,000 right now, and as we dig more into fees and get more accurate, that'll probably change a bit as well. But we are using SFR to offset the fees. If you open the, those links, you will see that basically it's only the voluntary fees such as yearbook, parking passes, et cetera, that it remained in there. Everything else has been erased. Which is good news for all. SFR goes another two years to maintain this. We have a lot of work to do as a district about where our values are and what we support as we go into, because if we continue with this practice, it will likely need to be a general fund. Conversation. So, but for now, it's two years is what our plan is.
And as part of that, will there be some, I would assume, data tracking that we would get more students that are able to participate, so showing the increase of the number of kids that can do this?
I, I would, I do assume that Chair or Director Howitt, as, but we will be not be looking at last year's numbers for sure. We'll be looking at two years ago and three years ago, but yes, this is the intent is to increase participation. So disaggregate the information to see if that has increased. Agreed.
Chair, I have a, just a question, procedural question. We have a motion recommended on the tuition, but it doesn't have for any of the other fees, it has the information on there. Do we need to approve the yearbook and the other fees that are on here?
We haven't had asked you to approve that in the past. It's been for information, so, but we have had extensive discussions in the past, as you remember, Director Howitt.
So I would move to approve the 2021, 22 non-resident tuition in the amount of $10,745 as presented.
Second.
It moved by Director Howitt, seconded by Director O'Connell to approve the 20 21, 22 non-resident tuition in the amount of $10,745 as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay. Trillium Family Services Contract. I'm Michelle Cook. Back to you.
The 2021 contracts that we currently have with Trillium supported two qualified mental health professionals this year. The con, this contract that's attached is, is for the 21, 22 school year, and it would support four qualified mental health professionals to expand the prevention and mental health services to more schools. The services are 12-month services, which means students and families will have access to services over the summer. And that includes the summer as a support to our summer learning camp programs and other school activities, credit recovery, et cetera. Staff are requesting authorization from the board to enter into a contract with Trillium Family Services in the amount of $221,332 to expand the access to mental health services for students and families. SFR funds will be used for the first two to three years of this purchase.
So if we if it's two to three years, then we would see this again next year for an annual contract amount. Okay.
I would move to approve the contract with Trillium Family Services in the amount of $221,332 to expand access to mental health services for students and families.
Second.
Moved by Director Howitt, seconded by Director O'Connell to approve the contract with Trillium Family Services in the amount of $221,332 to expand access to mental health services for students and families. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay. Center for Advanced Learning Charter Contract Approval. This is Carla Gay. We got a digital version, and now we get the in-person version.
Yes, I remembered to actually show up in person. Good evening, Chair and Board. The Center for Advanced Learning or CAL charter school contract has been reviewed by all three partner districts and approved by the CAL Board. As you may recall, they, we already approved the opportunity for the renewal. This is the final negotiated actual contract. That staff is requesting that the board approve the Center for Advanced Learning CAL charter school contract for the next five years from 2021 to 2026. And you will notice that attached is the approved contract as well as an MOU that specifies. And it is an addendum within the contract that specifies how each district will carry their share of the Measure ninety-eight funds to support CAL as well.
So for clarification, is the contract, does it include the MOU, or do we need to do that separately as two motions, one for the contract and one for the MOU?
It's a great question. The contract includes the MOU, there's reference to the MOU within the contract. Originally, they wanted to embed the language within the contract, but some of our other district partners at Reynolds and Centennial had concerns around overcommitting additional state funds to any particular charter programs, they wanted to be much more specific and just have it tied directly to the Measure ninety-eight funds, and so it's its own MOU, but it's referenced within the contract.
I would move to approve the Center for Advanced Learning CAL Charter School Contract for the next five years from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Howard, second by Director O'Connell to approve the Center for Advanced Learning CAL Charter School Contract for the next five years from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-six. Any discussion? I, I have a, a question, are there any significant terms that have changed within this contract, particularly over enrollment?
That's great, know that the enrollment is still five hundred, they requested to add it to five twenty to have it be consistent with some of the demand that they have, but the districts all felt like as we build out our other CTE programs, that we didn't want to lift that cap collectively across the three districts. We felt like we wanted to keep it at five hundred, that the, and they were fine with that, it was really a twenty-student change. The other concern was just cost management, wanting to make sure that we're not overcommitting. But, and then the, the thing that is probably most significantly different is a clarification that the CAL Director must coordinate with the districts when adding new programs so that there is an alignment of effort, and then we're not inadvertently creating a competition for students between CAL and the, their partner districts. That was an assumption, but it was never spelled out, and so depending on who is in that leadership role, it can go in a lot of different directions, so we wanted to be really clear that CAL is intended to be a complement to the partner districts and not a supplant of what we're doing, so it's a continual effort of alignment and communication. It also puts some responsibility on the districts, and this is just another clarification, it was already in practice but not stated, which is that the districts need to work with CAL around our scheduling, because one of the things that we acknowledged around lack of access, equitable access to CAL, is that our different districts have very dramatically different high school schedules. And CAL, that leaves kids who may be behind in credits but could otherwise benefit from the CAL classes not being able to benefit because of the courses that they would miss at their home high school. So that is not an easily solvable issue, but naming it in the contract as a requirement of the participating partners as well as CAL puts some responsibility on all of us to put our heads together and be much more clear about how we are collaborating to create greater equity of access for our students.
Another district uses it to help their emerging bilingual social access text, but they're not named in here.
New Sella for CAL?
No, not for CAL, I just know that other districts use it to support their English language learners or their emerging bilingual students. And it says that the reading level is key for English Language Arts, Science, Social Studies, Social Emotional Learning.
Myra, I'm on the CAL contract.
Oh, whoops, I'm ahead.
I can tell you that Lakisha and Tracy will have way better answers to that than I do. But I'll let them talk, answer those questions, sorry.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? I, any opposed? Okay. Now. New Sella. Jordan, do I start this one with you, or, okay?
I'll, I'll introduce the item, but Lakisha Washington and Tracy Klinger are here tonight as well to answer questions. It sounds like we will have, I won't be able to answer, so. Okay, Nizella is an online product that has been utilized in many of the district classrooms to support staff in utilizing engaging accessible text and content that is aligned with content standards to supplement instruction with, with students. Nizella provides authentic text resources that are constantly updated with new content that can be scaffolded by reading level in key areas of English Language Arts, Science, Social Studies, and Social Emotional Learning. This resource is critical in supporting content area teachers third through twelfth grade, as well as language arts teachers, while the district completes a reading adoption process this coming year. As a support for unfinished learning, this contract will be funded by Esri. Oh, they're online.
Did you guys hear my question, Tracy? No.
No.
If this was also a support that our emerging bilingual students would use.
It, it would be used for all the students in Gresham Barlow School District.
So then eventually this would also, we have to move to a general fund.
Myra, this is something that we are accessing at this point, because we're in the kind of in-between stages of reading adoptions, and so we're using this as a, a support. In the meantime, as we engage in that process, and if it's something that we continue to find really useful, then yes, we will need to find another way to fund it. But in the meantime, we believe this is a support our, our staff needs, I'm heading into this next year.
Any other questions about this, this item?
I would move to approve the New Sella Customer Agreement in the amount of one hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars funded by Esri.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Howard, second by Director O'Connell to approve the New Sella Customer Agreement in the amount of one hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars funded by Esri. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? I, any opposed? Okay. Next is school year calendars, Mr. Hugh.
Thank you Chair Peterson. On May sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, at the Board Business Meeting, Board reviewed the school year calendar during the first reading of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year calendar, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar, and the twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar. Annually, the Board adopts a three-year calendar. This year, the calendar adopted extends to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So the administration moves to recommend adoption of the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendars as presented for second read. Answer any questions?
Mr. Hugh, could you just detail a little bit what? What informs this calendar, like what? Because there's statutory requirement, I would imagine that, you know, what are the, what's that overlay that informs this calendar?
This calendar is used for planning purposes for our community and for staff. It identifies the start of school, when the breaks, winter break, spring break, and when summer, the end of the school year. And so, of course, it is something that the Board can change if we have some major issue like wildfires or inclement weather or some kind of a natural disaster, but this does help our community, as some of our community likes to plan for vacations or other things that they do for the family, so we try to give everyone kind of a three-year calendar. So two of the three of these calendars have, have already been adopted and approved, and as we kind of move into the next year, we kind of approve another calendar, so there's a three-year kind of look at time and different dates on the calendar.
And for clarification, so these are high-level calendars, these are ones that affect all the schools, where there may be dates that are associated with testing days or other late starts, things like that, that may be at the school level, but this affects all the schools equally at the district level, is that correct?
That would be correct, Director Howard. We also have level calendars that we provide to our staff based on elementary, middle, and high, but you are correct, this is a high-level calendar for all students in the Gresham Barlow School District.
Any other questions, Board?
We'll move to approve the twenty twenty-one, or twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendars as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Director O'Connell, second by Director Howard to approve the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendars as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? I. Any opposed? Okay. At this time, we have time for Board reports and requests, and update from Board members, I will start with Director Pulso. Director Rusko Beach. Director O'Connell.
I would say I'll pass, but I have to say so. So I just wanted to say, you know, it's kind of a tough year on the Board, there's a lot of consternation, as you probably saw in the last couple meetings. I strongly urge any new Board members that come on Board to remember that we're a Board of seven, and that takes seven to make a decision, and to stick with those decisions. Compromise is always good, you're never going to always get your way, things get, sometimes it comes back through it four times, but ultimately, any new Board member that comes on, be aboard.
Director Howard.
Move past this meeting, thank you.
Director Gomez.
Our interpreting services didn't work tonight, we had technical difficulties again, so.
And I will, I will also take a pass, so. Next, we have some information items, Paid Lunch Equity for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. And this has Jordan's name on it, Jordan.
Thank you Chair Peterson. Sorry to disappoint you, Director O'Connell, this is just an information item tonight for a few reasons, so I'll read the required language, and then I'll explain why this is an information item and non-action item this year. So as required by the United States Department of Agriculture, all local education agencies, regardless of current lunch prices, must annually review paid lunch prices to ensure compliance. The USDA provides a tool to determine compliance called the Paid Lunch Equity Tool. This requirement is in effect to ensure USDA funds are not subsidizing paid lunch amounts. The LEA is considered non-compliant when the average paid lunch price is less than the difference between the free and paid federal reimbursement rates. If the weighted average paid lunch price is less than that amount, LEAs must take action. The district has three options, increase paid lunch prices, contribute non-federal funds to the food service account, or increase the paid lunch by a smaller amount and contribute the remaining amount using non-federal funds. The memo stipulates that a one-year exemption may take place if a school food authority, in this case Sedexo, has a positive balance as of January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. So the, there are three reasons why this is an information item, the first is that the USDA has not released this tool this year. And so we're not able to utilize the Paid Lunch Equity Tool. The second is that Sedexo does have a positive fund balance, and so are exempted, and then the third is that the federal government has extended lunch waivers. And so we'll essentially be on our SSO program next year, meaning that lunches, breakfast and lunches will be free for all students next year. So we won't be charging any students for meals. So for those three reasons, this is an information item, we actually didn't even know if we needed to bring this to the Board. But without time for legal review, we said, well, let's just throw it on there, review it with the Board to be in compliance that we reviewed it. And, and move forward, so it's just an information item this year.
Thank you, and I just, I think it's good to know the reason the const, I have the consternation year after year, because we're raising our prices every year, and we always had a positive, any fund balance. And the, it just made zero sense to do that, and it just drove me crazy.
We'll take up volunteers to carry that mantle forward, Matt, so.
I, I kind of have a random question, I'm sorry, just kind of just thinking about how we pay for lunches and all that. So when we get our food in from Sedexo, the food is already paid for, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just wondering if you're the right person to ask this. Why would we have to charge for food if it's technically already paid for?
I guess you could say it's kind of like a reimbursement, I, I don't think I'm going to explain this well, but, so right now, we have a fund balance, we use the cash on hand to purchase the items. But if we didn't ever charge, then we would run out of funds on our fund balance. To Director O'Connell's point, the fund balance has grown and has continued to grow. And so I think this is something that we need to look at. I'm glad that Chair Peterson will appoint somebody to take up the mantle of the Paid Lunch Equity. But the, the other thing to keep in mind is that we do get a lot of reimbursement from the federal government, and so the, the paid lunch price isn't necessarily what's driving up our fund balance. It's the difference between the federal government's reimbursement rate and the amount that it costs us to actually run the program, and this has put us, put our district in a, in kind of a tough situation where Sedexo is doing a great job efficiently running the program. But what this Paid Lunch Equity Tool does is, it actually ensures that we're charging those who are paying enough so that the federal government isn't subsidizing meals that go to students who don't need the assistance by the federal government standard, and I want to be clear, the federal government and I don't necessarily share an opinion on what that standard is. But, so it's, it, it wouldn't drop, the Paid Lunch Equity Tool wouldn't drop the price that we pay, that we charge the students paying. If anything, it would identify a situation where we're not charging enough to pay participants, and then we would be required to increase the price that, that we charge to pay participants.
Alright, thank you for clearing that up, I always kind of wondered, thank you.
But this is in the weeds, but just out of curiosity to help understand, so no students are paying for their meals. What does the cash flow look like, is the federal government reimbursing our service provider, or is that cash still flowing through us?
It still flows through us.
Is that going to equal in equals out cash flow?
This year, it's actually been a positive, so our fund balance grew again this year, despite that we didn't charge students for meals this year, they were all paid through the USDA waivers, so like I said, Sedexo is running a very efficient program, and our fund balance has grown again. Part of that, in talking with Sedexo about why it's such an efficient program, is because we're running equipment beyond what's called useful life, because it's still working, and so we haven't been doing capital investments into our kitchens, and so we're going to start doing that now, because as your fund balance grows, the other thing that you have to do is tell the state and federal governments how you're going to utilize those resources, because you can't just keep growing that fund balance. So we're going to start replacing equipment in our kitchens that needs to be replaced, and we're also using that fund balance to, this year, we bought some equipment that was used for delivering meals, because because of the situation we were in, we delivered meals instead of having, we offered pickup, but the majority of meals were delivered and not picked up.
Okay. Next is financial update, as of April thirty, Jordan.
Thank you. There have been no significant changes in trends since the last report, expenditure projections for May and June are high to account for typical year-end. projections for May and June are high to account for typical year-end spending. If spending patterns are consistent with prior months this year, the ending fund balance projection will grow. If they are consistent with prior years, the fund balance is not likely to grow. And so just to explain that a little bit, when, when I'm doing a trend analysis, every month this year, our trend has been lower than the past. And so if the behavior of these last two months follows the rest of this year, this number will grow. The ending fund balance number will grow by June 30th. I'm, because we are in a hybrid environment and, and expenditures have stabilized and look a little bit more like they have in the past, I'm trending based on prior years for these last two months. And so if prior year behavior is what these last two months look like, we will end at 23 million or in excess of 23 million. And at this time, there are no known reasons that the number would decrease. So it's possible that number will go up. I guess it's always possible the number could go down, but right now, we don't have any indication that would.
Any questions? All right. Gin tent. We will have a board work session, and right now, that's tentatively planned for here. We will try to do it in person. So if it's not this location, we'll announce where it will be. On June 15th, is San Barlow High School's commencement from 4:00 PM. June 16th, Springwater Trails High School commencement from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. June 17th, Gresham High School's commencement from 4:00 PM. We're very excited for that. Some of us will be there. That's the best. Like Matt said, it's the highlight of the year, highlight of this, of this role. July 1st, we'll have a board work session and a regular board business meeting following that. Want to thank everybody for their attendance, their engagement, and there being no other business before the Board. We're adjourned.